Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We'll go through roll call. Jessica Crosby, I'm here. Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corpey.
Here.
Bruce Raboy.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Spokes Adich.
Here.
Joanne Smith. Not here yet. Beth Schmon.
Here.
Joe Sullivan.
Here.
Max Yuso. Okay, you guys know Joe's here, we're good. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, good, Joanne's here. Just sign her. As soon as she'll sit down, she said you have to sign this. Did you do roll call already?
Yep.
Good, awesome, think we're done through the badge. Alright, awesome. We'll do approval of agenda. Alright. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda that's presented? Yep.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Tony and second by Jess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll do open forum, Elks Student of the Month for April and May.
Well, I'm happy to announce our Elks Student of the Month for April and May. Our very first award winner is Kayden Corpey. And Kayden Corpey is playing a baseball game right now against the Cherry Tigers. He was unable to join us this evening, but we will invite him back for our mini-meeting, in which we'll honor him and learn more a little bit about Kayden. Our next April award winner is Jayden Johnson. Jayden, are you here this evening? Come on up, Jayden. Thanks for joining us. I have this for you. And come on up here, I'm going to talk a little bit about you, Jayden. In asking Jayden a little bit about activities that he participates in at Falls High School, he really enjoys math league. So you know where this is going. He's a math guy. He really enjoys programming when he's not in school. He likes to program video games and artificial intelligence. And he enjoys playing video games in his free time. After graduation, Jayden intends to go to BSU, and he would like to pursue a finance and computer science degree. When I asked Mrs. Manassa a little bit more about Jayden, here's what she had to say. Jayden is one of those students who is naturally gifted in math. When learning a new concept, he not only understands it quickly, but also sees how it connects to the bigger picture. After taking Algebra II with me as a junior, he chose to challenge himself by enrolling in both pre-calculus and calculus as a senior, by passing the more typical path of taking college algebra first. While math comes easily to him, it's clear that he's also putting in the effort to truly understand and master the material. Jayden has a calm demeanor and a dry sense of humor that brings a quiet but appreciated presence to the classroom. I'm incredibly proud of how much he's grown over the past couple of years, and I can't wait to see what he accomplishes in the future. Let's give him the hand for the award. Moving on to our May Student of the Month, Elks Award. And the reason we are doing May at this time is that the Elks Organization will be hosting a banquet for all our award winners, which will take place on May 4th. And so we really wanted the opportunity for our students to be invited to that. So, our first award winner for May is Lorelei Ford. Lorelei, are you here? Congratulations, Lorelei. We begin to hear a little bit more about you. At Falls High School, Lorelei participates in cross-country basketball, cheer, and track and field. In her free time, she enjoys spending time with her family and friends, and with her puppy. She also enjoys practicing and doing dance at their home or at the studio. In the future, she plans to stay in town and work for a year, and then continue working on her dance. And when I talked to Mr. Sandberg about Lorelei, here's what he had to say about her. "I've had the pleasure of having Lorelei in my class for the past two years. In that time, she's shown great dedication towards her studies and academics. She's truly a model for other students. She comes to class prepared, ready to learn, is inquisitive, produces high-quality work, and always has a smile. She's not afraid to ask questions that other students may not want to ask. She will be an excellent citizen that Falls High will be proud of as she enters the next step in life." Congratulations. And our next Elks Student of the Month for May is William Ginter. Come on up, William. A little bit more about William. William's a busy guy. He participates in band, jazz band, pep band, Knowledge Bowl, math league, bowling team, Minnesota Honor Society, student council, and swimming. I asked him what he likes to do when he's not in school. He's still a busy guy. Outside of school, he has a lot of interest in computers and technology. He enjoys playing video games, but also programming his own games, and utilities and websites. He also enjoys the hardware, having built multiple computers in the past. He's also had fun learning foreign languages recently. In the future, he plans on attending the University of Minnesota in the Twin Cities for computer science. I talked to Mrs. Manassa about William. She said it's been a joy to have William as a student for the past three years to watch his growth and dedication firsthand. This year, he's truly blown me away in calculus. William not only grasps new concepts quickly, but also sees how they connect to the bigger picture, especially as it relates to his future in computer science. William consistently challenges himself, taking the most rigorous courses available and excelling in them. Beyond academics, he balances work, extracurriculars, and even played a key role in receiving our school's math, reviving our school's math league this year. His intelligence and drive to reach his goals are nothing short of inspiring, and I know he has a bright future ahead.
Next, we'll do Falls Education Foundation and Purple Pride recognition. If I could have Mr. Dalton and Mr. Thompson please come up, because we are now in good fortune of speaking. I have the honor tonight to introduce two incredible men in our community, lifelong residents of International Falls. I would say they bleed purple and gold. They are the chair. Mr. Thompson is the Chair of Purple Pride, and Mr. Dalton is the Chair of Falls Education Foundation, also my old principal. So, one of the things that I want to tell you tonight, I thought it was really important to invite them here and to recognize what they have committed to our school district for many, many years. They can tell you a little bit about their organization, but what I have seen in the last seven months, I did not have the privilege to work with them prior to my departure from International Falls, but what I have seen in the last seven months come out of this organization is beyond what I could ever imagine in a community. And the contributions of time, effort, dollars that this organization has committed to ISD 361 and the lives that it has impacted, it's infinite. From classroom rugs, to classroom curriculum, to money for our athletes and our activities teams to go on buses and have dollars for transportation, to absolute revamping of things that we've done in our school, contributions to Bronco Arena, contributions to our gymnasium, sound system, I mean, the list goes on and on. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars have been given back to ISD 361. And I don't think there's enough that we could do to say thank you for what you have given to ISD 361 staff, students, and our school community as a whole. So, on behalf of International Falls Public Schools, I would like to recognize Purple Pride and Falls Education Foundation for your exemplary dedication and support of our staff, students, schools, programming, athletics, and community of International Falls. There are so many things here that we would not have without you and your boards and all the volunteers that you put together every so many months. And what I witnessed at the bingo at FEFW is just a prime example, the fish fry, the scholarships, the list goes on and on. And on behalf of our district, I just want to say thank you very much.
Share my story. I'll be brief, but I did want to give a little thank you, Beth. Just a brief background on Falls Education Foundation, and then I'll have Mr. Thompson share with you about Purple Pride. But it's been, by my recollection, 30 years ago that Falls Education Foundation was started. I think 1996. And same thing happening then is what's happening now. School districts in need, declining enrollment, not enough money to really provide the total quality education that you want for students. So, we tried to get something going, Education Foundation. My recollection is that it was myself, Tom Worth, and Steve Schmon. We sat down, and we did write up a set of bylaws. So, we were legal, but then we looked at each other and said, "How are we going to get any money now? What are we going to do?" So, it wasn't long after that that a couple people came along. They are deceased now, but I consider them saints. And it was Kay Herman and Janet Schickle. They came into the school, and they came to see me and said, "You're trying to get a foundation going? We want to be on board, and we want to help." We initially got $100,000 from a relative, Janet's, to get us going. Also, Janet and Kay were instrumental in the 1995 all-class reunion, the first one for Falls High School. And they gave us some money that they had left from the all-class reunion. So, we were then off to a good start. But the really big thing that Janet Schickle did was, she said, "I'm going to start an alumni newsletter for Falls High School alumni, and then we're going to ask for donations." And most in the form of memorials. 30 years later, that's been, for Falls Ed Foundation, the bread and butter for our fundraising. Like Beth mentioned, we've been able to give back several hundred thousand dollars since the inception of Falls Education Foundation and Purple Pride. It's just been tremendous. And we're, both Crazy and I went to school here. We got, you know, gold hearts and purple heads. We're still at it. So, I'm going to turn it over to Crazy, but I did want to acknowledge, let me make sure I get the right names. Our current board, Falls Education Foundation and Purple Pride is a subcommittee of FEF. Tom Worth, he was one of the original members. Dick Peterson, John Winkle. Mike Catron, Cindy Yuso. Jay Barkowski is on the Kybert Briggs. Emily Geddy. And they're a great board. They're just awesome. So, I did want to say too that since Beth has become superintendent, she's been so supportive, just excellent. Crazy and I have met with her numerous times and tried to get an understanding of what the needs, financial needs of the school district are. And there's still a lot there. So, we want to help as much as we can. And then Crazy talked, and he's amazing. He's the most amazing fundraiser I've ever seen.
So, thank you, Gordy, and thank you all members of the school board for this award. It certainly isn't something that, when we're getting involved with Purple Pride and FEF, it's not something that we look forward to. We like to stay under the radar and just make money for the kids. We want the kids to be the most important part of all this. But it certainly is nice to get awards. We're all put in, probably at home with the rest of them. Purple Pride is a separate committee that belongs to the FEF. The FEF is our parent group. And we are just a committee of that. And Purple Pride deals basically mainly with co-curricular activities. Sometimes people misunderstand what Purple Pride is. They think it's just about athletics. It's not. It's about all co-curricular activities in the school. And there's a lot of things that happen in the school that don't get recognized as much as sports. And we have the speech, and we have the debate teams, and all those other teams that are just as important as extracurricular activities for students that athletics is. And without all those extra programs, we don't have a very well-rounded school program. And it is so important that we keep all those co-curricular activities within the school. And that's what Purple Pride is here for. We're here to try to make sure that all those activities are funded. Our ultimate goal as a committee is to someday be able to pay the activity fees for all those kids that can't afford the activity fees for our co-curricular activities. And we're getting close. We're getting very, very close. Hopefully, within the next four years, we can reach our goal. And I guess I'm not ashamed to say what our goal is. Our goal is $2 million. And right now, we're pushing our first $1 million from when we started. So, the more money we get, the more we can give back. And that's our goal, to give back. I think our Purple Pride started with a golf tournament years ago. And it went fairly well for the first three, four years. Then we lost our Level 1-3 seed, didn't we? And so, we had to stop, and then we regenerated again. And that was going really, really well until that got degenerated, when we lost our golf course. So, we had to come up with something new. So, we thought, "Well, let's do a fish fry." And then COVID came in, all those different things. But we did manage to get that fish fry going. And it has become a very, very popular event in the community. Last year, our fish fry netted $21,000. So, that was huge. And each year since we started that, we've increased what we've done. We've added a few more different activities, donation activities for members of the community. And they seem to have taken off real well. Just for your information, so far this year, Purple Pride has earned $20,000 already just from our projects for this year. And we haven't gone through our fish fry yet. And we don't know what we're going to do this fall. So, hopefully, our goal maybe this year is to reach $50,000 or $60,000 just on Purple Pride donations from all you people in the community. But none of this can happen without you people and our merchants in our community. They are the most important part in this community we have right now, our local business people. And they are so generous. So, if you can, and I'm going to say this because I'd like to say this, is buy locally. Because when we go ask those people for help, who helps? They help them. And they're like anybody else in this community. We're all struggling. So, if we help each other, we can make it work. So, that's all I can say about Purple Pride. One thing I can say, I don't know if anybody knows this or not, last year, we donated over $130,000 back to the school for different projects. So, we're getting there. Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to public open forum. We have Beth. Would you like to come and speak?
Do you have a microphone?
Yes.
As much as you don't like it.
You need a microphone.
I am here with my Indian education hat on tonight. As you know, I took over as coordinator for Indian education this past winter. And just a little background. The school district has 10 or more American Indian students. We have to have compliance paperwork submitted to the state. When I took over, we were not servicing our elementary the way we should be. And so, when I had meetings with the state, we had decided, the state and I had decided that what we would do is we would start servicing. So, twice a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the afternoon, I go over and meet with approximately, between the two days, it's about 20-some students I meet with, in the afternoon. Once we got that going, then we, as a parent committee, which Anna Ref is our chairperson for our parent committee, we would revote, the parent committee votes on the compliance that we have an Indian education program in our school. So, we revoked on March 25th that yes, we are servicing our elementary and our high school students. And so, we just have to bring this paperwork. And it's, I need the signature of Joanne, the chairperson, the superintendent, and the chairperson on record that we are in compliance. So, we've already voted, that's the only thing we're doing here. Just as a side note, our number that we submit to the state is about 90 students that we service through our American Indian program. Alright, so, now I need it.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Janet.
Thank you. Alright, we're going to go on to committee and administrative reports. Joe or Max?
Just Joe today? Alright.
Alright. So, this month, the student council has had limited activity with their primary focus being the upcoming Spring Sports Week and Pep Fest, scheduled for the week of April 28th to May 2nd. The theme for the event is "School's Out for the Summer." To celebrate, they have organized themed dress-up days for each day of the week. Monday, Pyjama Day. Tuesday, Neon Day. Wednesday, Hawaiian Shirt Day. Thursday, USA Day. And Friday is a classic, Bronco Day. In addition, applications for new student council members are still available for those interested in joining. Or if the deadline is getting nearer, being May 2nd. So, turn them in as soon as possible. Another highlight this spring was Engineering Day, held on April 4th. A group of approximately 45 students accompanied Mrs. Manassa, who traveled to Iron Range Engineering School in Virginia. There, they explored various types of engineering and learned how virtually any interest or passion can be connected to the world of engineering. Prom was held on April 5th and began with the grand march from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., where students showcased their dresses and suits. This was followed by the main dance, which lasted until 2:00 a.m., giving students a night full of fun, music, and memories. High school and middle school choir concerts were held on the 16th of April from 5:00 to 7:00. And if you ever wanted to watch the concerts, they are on KCCTV. This year's seniors took a trip from Sunday, April 13th, to Friday, April 18th, traveling from Washington, D.C. to New York. During the trip, they explored iconic landmarks such as the Statue of Liberty, the 9/11 Memorial, and even got a view of the White House. It was a fun and educational experience, filled with sightseeing, learning, and lasting memories for our senior class. Speaking of trips, the VAM has an exciting trip to Chicago coming up, taking place from May 1st to May 4th. Finally, a major activity across the high school this month has been MCA testing, which involves students from nearly all grade levels. Testing will continue for some grades in the coming weeks. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like I haven't been here for a while. I've been at my kids' activities, and they have activities outside today too. So, our enrollment's at 436. We had two students move this month, but we had another student come in. So, we're down one from last month. We held our preschool registration, and we have two all-day classes. We have 18 out of 20 in one, and 17 out of 20 the other. So, we have five open spots in our all-day, everyday preschool classroom. And then our three-year-old classes, we have two classes, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday. And families have the option, of course, of registering for both of those classes if they wanted. So, both of those are filled. Our classes are capped at 20. And then 15 of those kids are registered for both of the classes. I just looked now over here. For kindergarten registration, currently, we have 48 registered for next year, plus four verbal commitments. So, that'll be 52 that we know will be registered. And then, of course, anybody who comes after, we always get lots of kindergartners at the start of the year or over the summer. May brings lots of events at the elementary school. We have our annual steam night coming up on May 7th. So, if you don't have plans, it's a great place to be at Falls Elementary School from 4:00 to 7:00, I believe it is. Five to 7:00, I think. And the theme is an Earth Day theme this year. We'll have our Purple Pride Carnival the week of May 19. We will have Relay recess also the week of May 19th this year. Our track and field day is coming up for 4th through 6th graders, and that'll be on May 23rd. Preschool graduation and kindergarten graduation, both will be May 28th. I anticipate we will continue with a drive-through ceremony that has been popular in the past. And then, our Outdoor Education Day for 5th graders happens on May 28th. And then, we have a tentative Service Learning Day, again, set this year for May 21st. We are MCA testing students in grades 3 through 5. 3rd through 5th grade, they all do reading and math. And then, 5th grade also does science. So, we'll be finishing those up, and then we'll be starting our Fastbridge testing once MCA tests have finished. We don't start those till the last six weeks of school, because that's legislatively meant through the Read Act, not any sooner. So, that's what we've been doing. Our teachers have been working really hard. I'm really excited for May to share some of our data with you, because we've made a lot of really good gains this year in reading. And so, we have a lot of kids who haven't been able to read for a long time, who are reading for the first time. And some of whom have been at school for a long time. So, it's been really an exciting year as far as that goes. So, any questions for me?
I just have a question on your preschool classes. The two, the three-year-old classes. Will those students that are signed up for both take all four days?
Yes. So, they'll go Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
So, then, as of right now, there is no openings for three-year-olds?
No openings for three-year-olds.
So, possibly looking at something, or are we not able to?
I'm going to talk a little bit about that tonight. Go over section.
Just because there's so many three-year-olds that are potty training over the summer that sign up late.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay, as Joseph stated, we are wrapping up MCA testing. We have 7th grade math remaining and 10th grade science. We have had a significant improvement in participation in MCA testing this year. Last year, we had 93 students opt out. This year, we had 28. We really worked together on focused communication with students and families. We wanted to emphasize the value of standardized testing as a snapshot of strengths and areas for growth. We wanted to emphasize the value of the experience in preparation for future exams. And then, also, just talk a little bit about the impact on our district in terms of helping us improve our programming and resources. So, we feel that that was very successful, and we'll continue to work on that going forward. And I also want to thank all of our wonderful, hardworking teachers. They provided students incentives, set goals, and planned celebrations afterwards. So, they have been really working with students on that. Our Spring Sports Week is scheduled for April 28th through May 2nd. We have a lot of events planned. Academic honor awards will also be presented during the week. We are also turning our eyes towards graduation. You know, just think about it, preschool, we started preschool, and then here we are, you know, the final, final month of school. Sort of the goal they've all been working on for so long. It's a wonderful, wonderful time to celebrate. So we're doing a lot of preparations. We are, we have some events that are traditional events that have been happening in the district. We have the Falls Education Purple Pride Foundation, or Purple Pride Breakfast that is always hosted at the Elks. The kids are looking forward to a walk-through at Falls High School and Falls Elementary School in their caps and gowns. And we just, we have a whole series of events we are planning. For the last week, the seniors are present on campus. I just want to make sure seniors are checking their emails, their school emails regularly, so they can stay updated. They are also voting on their graduation photographer. They're voting on student and faculty speakers. And we are using electronic Google forums for voting, so get the word out to the seniors. Spring sports, we're glad to see baseball, softball, and our other spring sports in full swing now that the snow is melting and the return of the sunshine, so we're very optimistic. Our numbers are, right now, are total for Falls High School and the A L C, five hundred and six. Now we are down six students. Two of those are due to graduations that occurred. Sometimes students need a little bit longer to graduate. We do have a couple of students that moved out of the area, and then we have had a couple that have gone online. And again, that's one of our goals, is to improve our online options for students so that they can stay with us and still take those online classes. Any questions?
Beth already did hers, I'm guessing.
So Casey, we need to have Nexus brought up for their presentation. So we need to know, Nicole and Todd, can you hear us okay? Nicole and Todd, are you able to hear us?
She said yes.
We can barely hear her. We need to be able to. Barely.
Not very well.
Casey's working on that, so just give us a moment here. So we have the Nexus team joining us tonight to talk a little bit about where we are in the construction process. And we have gone through the bidding process, and they have some updates for us. We've had a lot of really wonderful things happen with the referendum construction platform and moving through it, but we also had a few barriers that they're gonna talk to you about tonight. And then we have to make some decisions on how we're gonna move forward. So they're joining us virtually and have some information to share.
Yes, thank you. Can everyone hear you good?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. So we did open bids last Monday on the fourteenth. And prior to that, we do a lot of calling, pre-calling, making sure we have bid interest. We knew we were, well, we thought we were gonna be a little, little light, but we did have some good feedback from a lot of your local contractors, I would call them, and some others. We went into that bid opening having twenty-three will bids. Those are usually pretty accurate numbers. And then, you know, the state bidding laws, this does go out to, you know, statewide, countrywide. You know, when some of these plan holder lists, they'll get, and they'll send it nationwide. But for the most part, Minnesota projects, we do stay in Minnesota. And that was the case with the bidders we had. Again, we thought we were gonna open up around twenty-three bids, some of them bidding multiple work scopes. Other ones, we weren't too concerned about. For example, would be like a painting work scope. A lot of painters don't like to bond, they do that through the general. That was something we could look at after the fact. Something we definitely will be looking at here as we move forward. So we did open bids, and we opened up a total of eleven different bids on Monday. There was, you know, obviously not enough here that we are, at this point, going to recommend to award any of these currently. Some of the good here is we do have a design team that's going to be wrapping up the final drawings for what's left of the design at the elementary in the ice arena. Will be in, as construction documents ready to be issued, May thirty-first, I believe is the exact date, but end of May we'll call it. And then what we're going to be doing in the midterm, and what we heard from a lot of the calls after bid day was concerns about the workforce. We do know the jail now is, you know, going to be coming off. I think they're in pretty high, high construction right now. I know the roofing insulation was still on the ground last Monday. And I do know they have a planned opening for that jail in October, fully trained staff. So we think we can get a lot of those bidders to come over, I'll say. At least, you know, enough to make it worth our while to work with them. So our goal for moving forward is to get these complete set of documents, working with contractors. What we think will happen is we'll be going out for bid for the entire project, all work scopes in early June. And then we also are looking heavily and working with Beth and her administration to get in areas that, the building where we can cohabitate. We won't be doing anything that's not safe. This, the state inspectors have to sign off on that work. But areas like the pool area, or maybe some of the gym area as we get warmer, we're looking at everything we can here to, you know, get this project executed while the kids are in school, or shutting off certain areas as we can, or working second shift when the kids are gone. That is kind of to be determined. We want to get a lot of feedback from the people we're talking to. So when we do well for bid, they have a schedule that they can live with. One of the things that may be an option in a school board normally has to vote on this is expanding that summer schedule, so letting the kids out a little early and making them come back a little late. We can gain usually about two weeks on either end of that. That's still one of the items that we'll be discussing. But right now, we just gotta get that other set of drawings done. And then, you know, our plan is to actually come up there and sit down with each of these contractors that bid. The bids we got were relatively in line, I'll call them, except for the electrical. We gotta figure out a way and why that was so much higher than what we anticipated. But the rest of this is well within what we were expecting. You know, hopefully we can package it better and have a better schedule. We'll actually get these numbers to come down even more.
Can I ask a question about the, you said October. You thought that there would be more workforce. Is there going to be bidding that late, or are you going to bid before that?
No, I apologize, I said October. I was just doing a little research on the jail. And they're going to open in October with a fully trained staff. So they're going to, so my, my point of that was, the workers at the jail, especially like your foundation workers, your concrete workers, your general workers, you know, the bricks and the block, steel, those contractors will be done way ahead of that. So our goal is to be in the ground by fall. We don't know exactly what that will look like, because we want to make sure that the contractors buy off on it. The addition at the elementary school, the addition at the high school, and then the addition at the ice arena. I don't, at this point, I mean, it would be my assumption we won't be in the ground for all three of those. But we could be. I don't wanna, you know, say we won't be, but I think the odds of all three of those happening, and then whatever we get from feedback and what we can do, it would be a, as soon as the process is out next, a year from now, we'd be starting whatever we couldn't get in the ground at this fall.
So are you saying you're going out to rebid for the entire, the entire scope of every project at the end of May?
June. In June.
Okay, well, I'm confused. Hold on, I'm confused, because you said you did get some in-line bids this last goal. So why wouldn't we go with what we can? I don't understand. I don't understand why you'd go out for all new bids for the whole project if you got some that were in line.
Yep, so they're in line with what we had for the high school. What we're hoping and thinking is that if we sit down with these contractors and we open up, say, not only the high school, but also the middle school, that we'll get some scales of economy, they're able to ramp up. They'll probably have to pull, you know, additional resources, but we need to get a better number in that scenario.
And we just did that for the stadium. So we went out for bid for the stadium, the bids came back high. You guys said, we'll package it with the high school, and we'll put it back out for bid, and it'll be a, you know, scale, whatever. And now you're saying we gotta do it again?
I guess that could be a short, brief way of putting it, yes. But we're not saying, like, these bidders, you know, if we come back and we're getting some feedback here in May and possibly even June, we can still award these as long as they're willing to hold their number. The documents that we open, say, forty-five days, you have to hold your number. Now, with the way COVID has been, and, you know, now we got a new word, right, tariffs. They can use a fancy French word for force majeure. And then that can, can play into it. I don't think it will. I mean, who knows where we're gonna be with the tariffs and things like that, but.
Yeah, I mean, but I guess what I'm saying is, if we've got bids right now that are in line for the work, the scope of work that we sent out to get bid on, why wouldn't we move forward with that so that we can get something done for the community?
Because I, I think you, my, my recommendation is we need to see this whole picture and make sure this whole picture financially can fit with what we asked the taxpayers for.
But that's what you said about the stadium. So we put the stadium off, and we had it rebid with this other package. And now you're saying let's package it all together and do it again? Which always, it costs us money every time we do this, right?
The stadium was over budget, though.
I understand that. I understand. No, I understand that. But now you're saying the bids are somewhat in line. But that we should put it off. I mean, like I said, this costs us money every time we do this, right?
Yeah, the, the next time we do it, it's kind of a, I don't know if this is the best word to say, but it's winter takes off, because we can't do it again. We have to come in line. We'll have all the, all, all the work will be in construction documents. There'll be no other bid packages, there'll be no other changes unless we come in over budget. If we come in over budget on the eighteen million, we'll have more work to do. And that's what we're trying our best to do. Well, it was twenty-two million, six hundred and nineteen thousand total project costs right now.
So do we stand to lose the bids that are in line by waiting and rebidding?
Yes. The other complication is that is you have to give them purchase orders, you have to give them contracts, and they're gonna order and lock their pricing with their subs. If we have bidding, bidding issues and we have contract and the twenty-two point six million issues, we're going to need to figure out how to, how to get that. And if you've already got equipment ordered, you're not gonna be able to stop it at that point. I, I mean, that's worst-case scenario. I'm not trying to scare anyone, but that's why we think bringing this whole piece of a puzzle back in, getting these contractors back, looking at it. I mean, we had contractors that spent all weekend putting together a quote, and upper management came in Monday morning and says, and told them not to turn it in. So we've gotta work with these guys to figure out how, how we can best bring this thing for them and you and the taxpayers. We need to package it correctly. And that was the sprinkler fitter. They figured they needed eight sprinkler fitters here this summer to get that job done at the high school. So if we can give them better schedule, figure out how we can work together, I think not only will that number come down, they'll be able to bid the project, and rest assured, they'll have, you know, the, the right labor force that they'll need to get that done. And then when you start looking at scheduling it, so they can go from one building to the next, or one, one addition to the next, that all plays into, you know, a contractor willing to, willing to bid the project, the bigger ones. And we also are trying and doing our best here to make sure we got enough for the smaller, smaller contractors in the area. You know, now we've met a handful, Steve Jensen up there, he's been doing a good job of, you know, basically hunting them down and trying to see what they can and can't do as well.
When did you say the bids are going to be, you're gonna rebid? When is this gonna start?
End of May.
The end of May?
I would say that, well, in, in June is when we're going. So in Minnesota, you need, you have to be in the paper for three weeks, and it's gotta just be a local paper. So the minute we publish this in the paper, we can't open a bid for three weeks after that. We're trying to see if that's, well, we're gonna see if that's enough time when we can pull the trigger on putting it in the paper that we have an agreement and we have all our subs in mind. The general's a big one. Local guy, we've been talking to him quite regularly. And these other contractors as well, it's not just them, but.
Yeah, but have you, have we thought about breaking up the project into smaller pieces so that smaller local contractors can bid on them versus continuing to bulk this stuff up to such a high thing that we need a huge company to come in? And that's, I mean, we're more rural, so we need to think about that as well. Traveling and all of that stuff to here and having people stay here, that's costly too. So, I mean, I, I think that, I mean, have we looked at maybe separating out some of the stuff, like the electrical? Maybe that's why you got such a high bid, is because it's such a big job.
Well, I think it's funny, the electrical piece, because in the stadium, the electrical was the only part that was in line.
Hundred percent, we're looking at all avenues, all, we want to make this successful for you, the, the community, and the, the local people, local contractors. So yes, I think when we get down to it, what I foresee is having a, a larger piece and some smaller pieces. And that's the, the items we just need to talk through and come up with a plan that, you know, we've at least got some verbal agreements. I mean, it really comes down to bid day. Make sure they're gonna have envelopes there.
So do we get to see, do we get to see what you got in this most recent bid?
Yeah, there's a, there's a bid tab, absolutely.
Because I want to see the numbers.
So I just wanna, you know, there's a, there's a whole story to this process, which makes it really incredibly challenging. And, you know, there's certain snapshots that the public knows, there's certain snapshots that I know, the board knows. But one of the things that I can tell you that did come up is I did receive some calls from our local companies. And one of the barriers for them, and I think with many construction companies, is that they're booked out. So we're putting out bids and they're already booked out through winter or next year. So one of the other conversations that we did have is the scope of the work is, it can be very large. And for some of our smaller local businesses, they might have a staff of eight to ten when they're gonna do the electrical component, and they felt they needed twenty to twenty-five people to come in and do it. So one of the things that we talked about doing was looking at changing the window of time and the scope for completion. Hence, I think one of the, you know, I sense the frustration, I really understand it, but what we were trying to do out of the gates was to do this work around kids. You know, and that's what we were really trying to do, is prevent having to have construction around kids. Although, we met barriers of time constraints, staffing for construction companies, people in construction are booked out. I mean, that's the reality of it. So now we've had to come back to the table and say, okay, we may have to work around the kids, we may have to relay out to, to do the work, but also how can we make this feasible so our local partners have a better option and opportunity to bid on the scope of work?
I mean, unfortunately, if you guys want me to shut up, just tell me. Unfortunately, we had this ten times over with COVID. Unfortunately, we had this ten times over with COVID. Because COVID hit with inflation. And when you go out for bid, you don't plan on that much inflation hitting this. A lot of schools that, you know, had bad timing, if you will. You know, the referendum happens and look how long it takes design to actually get this thing out. I mean, that's typical, common. So we've had to deal with this, with the construction inflation. There was inflation clip on all our projects, but not to the amount that we needed during the construction, COVID inflation, if that's what I can label it.
So Beth, I get what you're saying. I totally understand. I get scope and smaller contractors and a longer. And I think we can look at that. Look at, do you need a longer length of time for more local contractors? However, the reason, and you weren't here at the time, but the very reason we decided to go for the referendum last August was so we could start this summer. Because the bid process and all this kind of stuff. And now we're finding out that the bids have gone out and people are already booked. This is exactly what we didn't want to happen. Exact.
Well, I would say to that, again, tell me to shut up. And we are, we do plan to stay on the start of the summer.
But not to the scope that we were supposed to.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well. Yes, I think, I think hopefully by August, we're, hopefully we see dirt move, but hopefully we're at least under contract and this thing is all bid out. We know exactly where the numbers are. And yeah, we have that concern to make sure we're within the overall scope of this too, so. Really what it did for us, I mean, and I think anything is, what we still plan to be done when we said we were gonna be done? It's just next summer's gonna be a bigger whale to catch, I'll do. It's gonna be a big, bigger summer next summer than we anticipated, but it's nothing that we haven't done before or can't do. As long as we work with those subs.
So I don't know how we can make a decision as a board to say we're gonna do a bigger package when we don't know what's part of the package that they just got, that they opened last week. I don't know how we can make that decision.
Well, one thing I don't think you have to right now. I think if we can give another month, come back to you at the, well, all the board meetings really, if you want us there. But let us come back in May and we'll have a better picture painted that, or options, maybe the better word for it for you. And you can give us some direction at that point. And we'll go back and then, you know, maybe, I don't wanna guess, but maybe June, or we have to have a special board meeting just to make that public. That letter, the letter that goes in the paper usually is approved by the board to go out for, I forget, so.
How about we have a meeting, a special meeting in a week and you can come back and tell us where a better picture? Because I don't wanna wait another month.
Well, I don't think we're gonna get.
We want plans. We want plans to sit down with the contractors so they can look at it and give us their ideas too.
So what I'm hearing Todd and Nicole is that you need to have the full set of plans to sit down with the contractors. But I think what I, I think needs to happen next is I think we need to take our subcommittee of the referendum group. I think that Todd, Sean, Nicole and I, we need to get together and create a next step that we can make a recommendation for to move forward. Then my question would be, how soon can we make that newsprint ad to go out so we can implement those three weeks and then bring that back for the next bid? So the recommendation, I think on behalf of the board, would be to bring our subgroup and your team together as soon as possible to talk about what next steps could look like so we can get that bid to print sooner than later.
If we decide that's how we wanna go.
Can we make that happen?
Yeah, we, what I heard you say is you want a meeting like in a week with Sean and Nicole and I, right? That's...
Yes. And if we can make that happen this week, I think Dale wants to speak.
Yeah, I think we should do it this week yet and have Steve there too, because I wanna understand our options. I don't understand our options right now in the meeting. I don't expect to in this forum.
Me too.
So.
Yeah, actually, we have a design meeting, right, Thursday?
Yep.
Twenty-fourth?
Yep.
So if you wanted, yeah, I guess for me, Thursday or Friday this week would work.
Let's try to make that happen either before or after that design meeting. All right. Any other updates?
I don't think so.
Well.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does Tim have your report?
Uh, he and Beth are not.
Okay. So you're next.
I'm sure all of you didn't expect tonight to be as long as it's going to be, so I'll try and go as quick as I can here. It's not working. I might have to click for any cases. So I'll try and keep mine as brief as possible for the sake of time. We're already an hour in, but you can click to the next slide. For those of you who don't know me, I think I know most everybody in the room. I've either seen you at the listening sessions. I've had meetings with you, taken phone calls. But I'm Beth Schumone. I am the superintendent. For my board report tonight, I'm gonna just capture some information on our four-day school week in addition to some of the projections and where we're gonna move forward for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. It's just a basic overview. What is on the agenda for tonight is what the board will be going on that you're going to see tonight. So what I wanna talk to you first about is I wanna first of all say thank you to our community for using your voice, whether you were for the four-day school week or you were in opposition or if you were neutral or had questions or you needed more data. The overwhelming response to gathering information was beyond what I had expected. So regardless of your feeling or stance on that proposal, I wanna say thank you. It was just, it was remarkable what we saw. So the story began, the regional superintendents that we belong to, which is again, Ely, Masabi East. The conversation started last year. And how MDE said that schools could operate through a flex learning plan through an application through MDE to move to a four-day school week for many different reasons. It happened, the flex learning plan was available prior to COVID and then MDE pulled it away. But it resurfaced after COVID due to all the different educational modes that you see for learning. Online, hybrid models, post-secondary education. So they reopened it, but it's an application process that you go through. And you have to show cause why you are applying as a school district to move to a four-day school week. So this year, all of the different school districts in our region have either explored moving to a four-day school week or continuing to explore. They have either voted or they have moved to a four-day school week. So all of the regional schools within our area that we work with, all of them have gone to a four-day school week with the exception of International Falls and Masabi East. We did have Masabi East voted no, but the rest are on trajectory to move to a four-day school week. So on tonight's agenda, under the action item, is where are we gonna go as International Falls Public Schools? So all of the information that I have collected regarding stakeholder feedback has been conducted through surveys. It's been done through listening sessions. It's been through in-person phone calls, phone calls, in-person meetings, emails. I've had great conversations in the community. We had, every session that happened, we had just stakeholders, people who had kids in the district, people who didn't have kids in the district, people who wanted to learn more and people who felt strongly for and strongly against it. So when we move forward tonight, there's gonna be a recommendation. And I want you to know, as a leader for ISD three sixty-one, it's really important to all of us, I would say, who represent the district, that people have transparency, but they also have the opportunity to have their voices be heard. So the other piece that we really look at is data. We're really trying to make decisions based on data and the needs and the progress to move our district forward and not falling behind. So when we look at some of the responses that came in from our staff survey, you see the number up there, but we have a hundred and nine staff members who responded to our four-day work, four-day work week, school week, and we have overwhelming support. We were in about, just over the ninety percent in favor of it. We had people also that were in, they really were neutral in how they felt. They wanted more information. And we had, had about two percent that were opposed to it. So overwhelmingly, the staff felt it was something that was, they were really in favor of and it had, their reasoning behind that was for the wellness of staff and students because we are the ones that work every day, boots on the ground with our kids. And we see some really significant needs in addition to school attendance and staff attendance and our substitutes that we see in our building. So that was something we felt really had a lot of data behind it and power behind it that we felt it could really have a positive impact. Although, they also had the opportunity to bring forward some of their concerns. And their concerns were aligned with some of the concerns that we saw from our community. And that was the food insecurity, people who may not have access to food. Because we have kids that really need that extra scoop of food when we talk about breakfast and lunch and missing that one full day. We talked a little bit more about having that longer date, making sure the impact of a school day was really profound and make sure that kids are up and moving and having project-based learning. That was a concern is making sure that structure and the opportunity for our kids was really robust. When you move down to the next one, we had five hundred and sixty-three community members. And that would be parents, that could be students, that could be people who don't have kids within our district. But those, that was a survey response of what we saw for survey feedback. And as you see on the board, you see fifty-two point seven percent were in support of a four-day school week. We had thirty-four point five percent in opposition of it. We had approximately ten percent that were neutral and we had two point eight percent that were unsure at the time. Again, areas of support in that survey were people felt that the family time would be beneficial, opportunity to get travel appointments. We had hundreds and hundreds of embedded information regarding how people felt. Lots of positives. Those are the five primary areas that came up over and over. School attendance, family benefits, travel, appointments, athletics and activities, the scheduling and being able to leave as a family and take the students out, and then the financial savings. Now, when we talked about areas of concern, the top five areas that came up from our community survey were much like the area that we heard back from our staff. Childcare options, access to food, students being home alone, making sure that there was adequate supervision for those students, for families who did not tap into childcare. And what did the schedule look like? And so I think that's the one that came through really loud and clear as I really looked at the data and as the board members took feedback from the community was really, I wanna know what the day is gonna look like. I oppose it, but if we go to it, it's really important to me as a stakeholder to know what a child's school day is going to look like. Because a high schooler's school day is gonna look vastly different than a preschool school day. So that seemed to be the highest data point that kept resurfacing over and over. Then the last one was what about those kids who are home alone and maybe don't have that family enrichment? Or maybe they don't have siblings or maybe they are tasked with having to watch their younger siblings? What about decrease in mental health and having some of the challenges of that social emotional access? And we found these five areas of support and five areas of concern to be consistent with what we heard in the listening sessions. We also had feedback regarding people wanted more details on the financial savings, more details on the childcare, what's that going to look like, what opportunities, what's cost? So really, at the end of the day, overwhelmingly, we found that people wanted more details before the district moved forward. So overall, the strong communication and the concrete plans before the district would move or vote to move were really centered around the academic, the childcare, the athletics and the activities. Go ahead, Casey, to move to the next one. So that being said, you don't get the agenda, but on the board agenda tonight, the recommendation that the board will vote on tonight, the recommendation that will be moved forward for voting purposes tonight is that we will retain the five-day school week and will continue to explore the option of a future four-day school week. But we will have more opportunity to investigate schedules. We'll be able to monitor what happens this year when one of our school partners goes to a four-day school week. And we'll be able to provide more details in what our stakeholders asked of us. So we provide full transparency. That is what will be presented to the school board tonight is to retain the five-day school days in addition to move forward with more exploration and provide the community with more details is what they asked. So that is what's on the board agenda tonight. The next slide that I have up is the school district design as a whole. And for those of you who don't know me, I live and breathe by data. So that's something you're gonna hear me say a lot. Our decisions have to be made on data, not what we think is right, not what we feel is right and not because we've done something the same way for thirty years. And I'll give you an example of what I'm gonna talk about tonight. We know and love all of our courses that we offer at ISD three sixty-one or any other school district. But if we're servicing and providing an education for our students and we have a classroom that has three students in it, it doesn't make, it's not a sound financial decision to operate a class of three students in it. But if we look at the data, hence you're gonna see a shift in how we program from CTE to work-based learning to an online school. Or we gathered a significant amount of data from our kids and they want to have the opera. Not everybody is on a track to a four-way, to a four-year school for a college degree. Some kids are on track to going to trades. Some kids want to become certified CNAs and they want to go on the track right into the workforce. So the data that the kids gave us was really centered around, you know, four-year university trades and programming, in addition to they wanna explore some other careers that are out there. So hence, an example of my offerings tonight is if you have a classroom with three, a course offering with three students in it, but you have a course offering that the kids say, if you offer this class, you're gonna fill it, that has happened this year. So we've had to maybe pull a class that we have low enrollment in so we can offer more on the other end and still be within the realm of being fiscally responsible as a school district. And sometimes change is hard, but those who work with me every day will know what I say. With change comes great possibility. We just have to be risk takers and look at things a little bit differently. So I'm hoping that people will be open-minded tonight by some of the changes that I am gonna share with you tonight. I have Lisa, Lisa, Principal West is here tonight and our school counselor, Angie Watts is here. These two humans have worked endlessly regarding our class schedule. They have shifted and moved courses based on enrollment. The kids have provided us with just a plethora of information on what they sought and what they wanted to see in their school district. And as a high school, that's really important to us because we want to retain our kids and want our kids to really enjoy coming to school. So the school district design that you're gonna see, you're gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit about today is the early education, childcare, community education, student programming, CTE, work-based learning and online school in the ALC. I know that the school district has in the past kind of moved back and forth in specific areas. And sometimes those decisions are made on finances and sometimes they're made on space. Hence, one of the reasons we went to referendum. One of the things the data point, the data shows us is that sometimes we lose kids at that early education piece. And in order to retain kids and have that feeder school component to it, which means preschool is the feeder school to elementary school, elementary school is the feeder school to middle, middle is the feeder to high school. We have got to make sure that we, our foundational program is really robust. Hence, we shifted how we're offering our pre-K classes. I think board member Porty asked that tonight. So we are offering longer days to access our preschool programming, which they're filling up fast. Hence, we probably will end up having to look at another option because we want those early learners here. Research shows that early education is one of the greatest foundational pieces in a child's success. So we wanna really make sure that our early education program is ramped up. Second, in all of the surveys and data that we've conducted, and we know as a rural community, our childcare options are sparse in International Falls, in the area of Poochiching County. Some of the data that we've collected in our surveys and in conversations that we've had as administrators and board members is people are seeking after-school childcare and are really wondering if that's something that the district will ever look at doing. Hence, that is something that we are moving to start exploring and that is on the agenda for tonight to look at that combination of a community education slash childcare student programming. a community education slash childcare student programming director. When we talk about student programming, one of the other areas that the community has really voiced is that we have moved away from that summer programming. And sometimes that summer programming is strictly driven towards how we fund it. And I know that Principal Tate has done a remarkable job in offering that and is formerly known as targeted services. In other districts, it's known as Excel, it's also enrichment. But the piece that we're missing is not only do we want to enhance the academic side, but we also want to enhance the student experience side. So making sure they have access to the arts, making sure they have access to the outdoors. Hence, one of the things we implemented this year is we implemented a new position where we have a grant writer who is actively seeking grants for childcare in addition to summer programming for our kids, which is directly aligned to the childcare component because families have a big struggle with having childcare access during our summer months. Last, one of the areas that we really had to look at this year was our alternative learning center. And that has been an outstanding program throughout the years. Former Principal Eversen was very passionate about that area and it has been a highly successful program, especially as we move towards a track for graduation with some of our most at-risk students. That being said, there's a great cost by having the ALC offsite. So again, we've had to look at the fiscal responsibility of the district, but also how are we making sure that our most at-risk students also have a rigorous learning experience? We will be closing off a wing in our school district and we'll be bringing that program back to our site. Last bullet point, community education childcare director, and that is where we are having a greater conversation. International Falls has always had a community education director. We are looking at proposing tonight. I've proposed on the board agenda tonight an action item for the board. They will, I'm asking for a childcare director slash community education director where they can look at programming overwhelmingly, not just our community education-based programming. How can we enrich the students' lives by offering programming here in the evening, in the summer? And how can we expand those offerings so we go from school to childcare to programming? So it's all-encompassing and it's more of an enrichment program versus an intervention program. You can go to the next slide, please. So with that, and I will be doing a proposal, a more robust proposal online for our community coming up, but here are the baseline facts that I'll be proposing for tonight's agenda. So for the 25-26 school year, I think we all know that leadership is really hard. You win some and you lose some and sometimes you get some feedback that is not, sometimes hurts the heart, but you have to move forward. But one of the things that I want you to know is I've had the honor of working with Principal Tate and Principal West for many years as a colleague and now as the superintendent. And they both come with some really mad awesome skills and I just have to name what it is. And this decision was not an easy decision, but I have to invest where I feel they are going to have the greatest impact to move our district forward. So what is going to happen next year is Principal West is going to be moving to Falls Elementary and Principal Tate is going to be moving to Falls High School. Principal Tate did an incredible job rolling out the REED Act and her robust intervention model at Falls Elementary and the growth that has happened there has been significant. Their team has done a phenomenal job. We are going to get ready now to move to Phase Two, which is the REED Act and our secondary staff. So she will be coming over to our school and her skill set when it comes to programming, the REED Act and tying all that together is going to enhance some of the areas of need that we have at the high school level. Mrs. West, for those of you who know Mrs. West, she has a robust background in restorative practices. She has a robust background in culture and climate and also just looking at an MTSS model. And for Falls Elementary, one of the things that we really want to look at is really taking a look at core instruction, our Tier Two, which is that intervention model, and our Tier Three, but also the enrichment piece. She also has a background that is robust in positive behavior interventions and support. So we are going to be flipping them moving forward so they can help take each school to the next level that I think is, that we think and what the data shows in order to move us to the next phase in which 361 really needs to move, move towards. If we continue to do what we've always done, we are going to be looking at projection deficits in four to five years, which we will have significant cuts in our district if we don't do something different. The retention and enrollment scale for our students, our 193 students notoriously says that the majority of our students are going to school online. Hence, is where I see Principal Tate coming in to help me build that program because she's got a very strong program, program, um, skill set and I think she can help move us forward in that realm. We have got, you know, Principal West talked about today, we've lost two students online. We have to do something different when it comes to students who want to have an online learning experience. We can, we can educate those students still through ISD 361. So then we're going to take a look at West End. So as we looked at the possibility of the construction within the district and we also looked at the possibility of growth, because with four-day school weeks and with some of the expansion areas that we're going to do, we have to be prepared for, A, are we going to lose some students? Or B, are we going to gain some students? How are we going to create a model that is adequate for growth? So what will happen next year is the proposal tonight that the vote, the vote will happen tonight for the board being proposed is West End Elementary will also be closed off and we will make that an early education center. So our preschool programming there, our childcare programming there, our community education programming there, and our birth-to-three programming there. We'll have family opportunities there and that will be housed on the first floor of West End Elementary. As we talk a little bit more about the expansion, what the data shows, what has not worked is though we've had great educational opportunities for our kids in sixth grade, we are seeing that they're still young and we're seeing significant social, emotional, behavioral needs from our kids. So we felt strongly that the data is showing us that we need to move them back to an elementary model and then it prevents them from being in the high school for seven years. So they're actually, they're elementary students for, for that K through six years. Now, I know everybody's minds are going to transportation. There is going to be a very specific transportation drop-off pickup security model that will be implemented with all these changes. I will have all that rolled out with you once Missy and Lisa and I put that all together and that will be delivered over the summer. So please know we will take that very seriously, very serious and we will make sure that everything is rolled out appropriately so you feel good about where we're going. Next, I'm going to have you pull up the blue link right there, please. So the last thing that I'm going to talk about for your voting purpose tonight, what is on the board agenda and you all have a handout. So the first area that you see is Falls Elementary. That's in the upper left-hand corner. So on the left-hand column, you're going to see the, the sections that we had at Falls Elementary for the 24-25 school year. So when you go through your handout, you're going to see that we have preschool, currently has three sections, and then you're going to see the FTE. So an FTE 1.0 is, is a full-time staff member for those of you who don't know. And so as you can see, the projections for 24-25 to 25-26, you'll see that the preschool team came off there and you'll see them in the second tab, which you don't have to hit yet, Casey, is you're going to see that their FTE was added to the Falls High School staffing grid. So you're going to see deficit numbers at the bottom, but you're going to see how they're carried over to equate to FTE assignment. So as you know, and I've talked about this before, the political climate is a little bit rocky right now out there and there is, you know, the constraints of the Department of Education is, is going to be dismantled. And if you don't sign specific things, you're going to be, not going to get specific funding and funding that is essential to school districts, especially rural school districts like Title One dollars, important, and those go to some of our most at-risk students. Talking about taking away federal grants, important dollars to help support our school, schools and our children. So what I've done with the administrators, and it's not always popular, is we're living within our means until we know what those bottom-line dollars look like. So what the staffing overall says is that we are going to go with what we had this year moving into 25-26, even though we have, Principal Tate has asked us grant out there she's waiting on. We think we're going to have a, a rise in our compensatory funding, but we're planning as if we don't. So we know that in the end, if we have extra, we're going to be able to bring maybe some, some intervention, classroom interventionist back, or maybe we're going to add an additional social worker because we know the data shows that our behavior and our discipline and our mental health of our students is struggling right now. So if you scroll down, we have three sections in all areas, oh, sorry, Casey, scroll up, of all of our K through six classrooms. We carry those over with the exception of moving preschool. Go ahead and scroll down now. But then we add it into the 25-26 school year at the sixth grade. So what's going to happen then, what the proposal will be is that our, we're going to kind of give a snapshot to our fifth and sixth graders where they're going to have a model where they're going to have a specialized reading teacher, specialized math teacher, and a specialized social science teacher. But they'll have a homeroom teacher. They will stay with that teacher. That will be the teacher that you'll communicate with. We'll work in interventions and enrichment in that and they'll have much of what they already have. It's just going to, the sixth grade students are going to be at the elementary school. As you scroll down, right now today, our special education numbers will be the exact same in addition to our specialists. So one of the things that was very important to me is, and our team overall, was that we have to make sure not only that we provide robust academic opportunities, but we also need to provide robust electives and making sure that we have music in our classrooms, making sure that we have STEAM, you know, science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics. So we've taken staff from the high school that maybe have a .2 or a .4 and how can we embed them back into elementary? So for example, one of the areas that we're looking at doing, which we're all personally excited about, is bringing a language over to the elementary school for specific grades, introducing Spanish at the elementary, looking, making sure all of our kids have STEAM, bringing back fifth and sixth grade band and music and making sure they don't have to wait until they get to high school for that. So all of our staff now will be 1.0, even though we had to pull back in other areas, we were able to pull from one area to push into the other and those were decisions were made on data. So if you continue to scroll down, so when you look at the bottom of your pages, you're going to see that there is 39 FTE this year at Falls Elementary. We're slated right now because we're waiting for certain grants and we're waiting to get our compensatory dollars, the final compensatory dollars, which means that, that carries over to, we are over then with the staffing grid that we have now, three FTE. Those three FTE have been added to Falls High School in staffing. So let's go to the next tab. And this is where I'm going to have to lean on Principal West and Mr. Grewatz are here to ask, answer any questions that you have when it comes to specific courses. I'm just looking at FTE from a budget perspective. So when you look at Falls High School, again, in 24-25, you see the sections. We have three math teachers. We have three English teachers. Now, these are not the courses. These are just the FTE. So when you look at this, we have the business and computer teacher, but we looked at, again, those numbers and we decided that we don't need to offer all these classes that we've offered with the low enrollment numbers. So let's take a look at what can we add. And they can talk to you a little bit more based on questions you have, but we added work-based learning. So students can get credit. They're going to partner with a community business. They're going to field out and earn credits based on the trades and business opportunities with their school, with their community. We still have two FTE for PE and health. We still have the language and culture. We still have the two, two FTE with that, but we, that position is going to be shared with Falls Elementary. Still have the band and music and now we will have ALC onsite here, which has a significant savings for us as a school district. As you continue to look at special education, though the special education numbers right now to date are pretty much the same, I have downsized that to a .5 until Principal and Tate and I look at the numbers because we're also looking at creating a different model in what our special education looks like. And again, sitting on what dollars are still out there as we get ready to move in closer to this 25-26 school year. Our CTE and our shop programming is going to be expanded. Our special education teacher is going to be working .5 and .5 in shop and special education. So you see that differentiation in that grid also. Itinerant staff is, is certified staff onsite. So we're talking about our dean of students. We're talking about our school counselor, community ed director, athletic director, and our grant writer. In addition, you see that overage from our ECSE, birth-to-three teacher where we would, we have two of those. We would put one at each school. So we make sure that we have one on the preschool, early education wing with that team also. Then you see the adding of the preschool at the West End Elementary and our administrative team. That being said, that puts Falls High School with those changes over 3.7. And if you look at the far right, you're going to see Falls High School is over 3.7, Falls Elementary is under 3.0, which means we will have an additional, additional .7. And with that .7, we, Mr. Sandberg is, is going to part, you know, a three-quarter time. And so we're getting ready to hire a new social studies teacher. And I want to tell you, we have almost 10 applications and we're super excited about that. And one of the things that I want to tell you is Mr. Sandberg has decided to stay. So he, he is going to help us launch the online learning program. So we're really excited about that. He's really invested in that. So he's going to be teaching online in addition to one or two social studies classes. That's a lot of information. And now I want to open it for questions and Thane and Lisa are here.
Okay, Beth, do you mind? I don't think anybody heard the, the grades at Falls Elementary. I know you talked about preschool and I know that sixth grade's over there, but just to summarize, it'll be K through six over at Falls, correct?
Yeah, K through six at Falls Elementary School, preschool, birth-to-three at West End Elementary with the option, an opportunity of moving to a childcare center, community education, and hopefully some additional programming. We won't have a summer enrichment program on the docket yet, but that is our, one of our goals for next summer.
So are the seventh and eighth graders, they're going to be on the second floor of West End?
The seventh and eighth graders are going to be on the top of West End, but also we have, I think we have it set up so they're, they're more on one end. And I'm going to give them a microphone so they can answer any questions.
Sure. The goal, we continue, to continue creating somewhat of that separation with our seventh and eighth graders. We've already had conversations really early on in the year about how the eighth graders are really, you know, transitioning and we've talked about whether they can be a little bit more integrated into the high school. So this plan will work out well with our seventh graders, our, their lockers, and eighth graders as much as possible. And then we've stationed some of our, for example, our math classrooms, our two teachers who teach maybe high school students and seventh and eighth grade classes. We, we positioned them so that they're very close to West End. Students don't have to come very far out of West End. However, high school students will still be able to enter from another side. So we're really trying to be really purposeful and intentional about where we put our classrooms.
Can you tell me what birth-to-three is versus the three-school, three-year-old preschool class?
Do you want to have that to Ms. Tate, Lisa?
So birth-to-three is like Ginger does that. That's like going into the home and doing all those home visits. And then once kids enter three-years-old, they can either come to preschool or they still have visits at home. And then Angie's licensed then, well, Angie's licensed for both as well, but she's servicing the three to five-year-olds. So she services the preschool kids that are onsite and the kindergarten kids.
Okay, thank you. So birth-to-three is, is only special ed or is it?
It's all special ed that we're talking about.
Only special ed, birth-to-three, and then three, two, five, four, okay.
Also special ed, yeah.
Also special ed, yeah, all of our DB developmental ability.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had some, I don't know if it's now, but there, there were numbers here on your sheet that I guess, Thane, you get to answer. I'm just wondering, now for the band and choir, looks like not a lot of kids are signed up yet and there's a whole bunch of spaces. So what do you guys think that there's gonna be a whole bunch more? And that's why, or are you eliminating those band and choir, seven, eight, nine, 12? You see where?
Thane and I were discussing that because you had asked me that question, the band choir. And those are the kids that go between band and choir. So they have both. And so that helped clarify that for me. So for example, you know, they are, they might do band three days a week and choir two days a week. So that's why you're saying.
So those numbers aren't really accurate, those, okay.
Yeah, it's a little more sensitive, I think.
Little more fluid.
Yes.
And you'll have the DAP. What does home mean, 3-0-0-3-9-0, home? Right under DAP.
I just put that in for students that do, like special ed students who are here for half a day. We still have to come for the other three, four hours and they're someplace. And now we know when we're gonna schedule it at home at that point. So that's the only reason that's in there.
Okay, and you will have a DAP person prepared for adaptive FIAID. Okay, and then the intro to business on the other side, you got zero. What is that telling?
Yeah, that's kind of a tricky one. We also run business through our CTE, college-level business course that Mr. Anderson teaches. So we can run both high school and college classes together as long as we stay at 40, 49% in the high school. 51% of students have to be in the college-level class. So that's why it's called curved enrollment, including both high school and college students in there. If we flip it over and we take a look at the third one from the bottom, CE, yeah, CE, BU, AE. That is the same class that is now populated with high, with the college students.
Okay.
So we can pick up additional high school students in ninth and 10th grades, kind of a bonus to have the high school students in there at the same time.
But then if the 10th graders won't get that college credit, let's allow the 12th graders?
Correct. If you're in the high school portion, it's only a high school credit. However, they do get the experience.
Are they doing the same work there?
Exactly the same. And that's the same with all of our CTE, our college and high school course. And we're able to operate that way. It's just that the other courses are very popular. We already have 33 students in college-class so the high school students have to be removed at that point.
So does anybody get preference for that class? Like, say, do the kids that are registering for it to be in college classes get preference over the ninth and 10th graders for high school? Or is there no preference?
Well, the seniors usually get preference regardless of what course they're going into. This is our last shot at it, middle 11th grade, and we work our way backwards from 12th, 11th, 13th.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, Beth. Are there any committee updates?
I have one.
Sure.
This is for the Athletics and Activities Committee, which is myself, Dale, Tony, and Beth at this time. We've met twice over the last month, month and a half. We heard a few concerns from parents and students on coaching staff. As part of that, our athletic director has addressed this feedback with the coaching staff. It's been provided. Policies are being updated to address the concerns that have been brought forth. The students have been surveyed and overall, the scoring for the coaches was favorable. And this is in particular to the coaches that we are approving on the agenda. At this time, if our athletic director is recommending the position with the support from our admin staff being Beth, the Athletic and Activities Committee is going to support the decision and bring forth that recommendation to the school board. A full audit of ISD 361 policies has been completed by MSBA. They've provided us feedback. So now we have another committee, the Policy Committee, which is gonna start working on those policies. And we're hoping, once those policies are updated, that then there's gonna be more clear, clear procedures and policies going forward. So hopefully, we don't foresee as many of those coaching concerns being brought forth. A complete review of our Bronco Athletic Handbook has been completed as well between the school administration, school board, and our athletic director. And the Policy Committee is also reviewing that and gonna be bringing back feedback. There you go.
Thanks. Any other committee reports? All right, moving to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move that.
Motion by Rocks.
A second.
Second by Tina. Any discussion? All right, I have a motion by Rocks and a second by Tina to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will move into the action items. Improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Resolution of acceptance gifts and donations. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas the Minnesota statute 465.03 states, "The school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD number 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district." And can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion. A second.
Motion. By Jess and second by Tina to accept gifts and donations. For AmeriCorps and Chuching Technology Initiative, Cape Youth Room Snacks, Drinks, and End of Year Celebration for Students Involved in Cape, $896. Guns and Hoses Hockey Game Proceeds, $1,380.50. Borderland Jewelry Library Donation, $100. Bronco Swim Boosters Booster Paid Coach, $1,000. Bronco Football Boosters Headsets, $1,249. Bronco Boys Hockey Boosters Booster Paid Coach and Helmets, $1,380. Bronco Girls Hockey Boosters Helmets, $730. Bronco Track Boosters Track Equipment, $4,488. Reading for Education Funds Raised from schoolstore.com, $1,096.71. The Bronco Hall of Fame Coca-Cola, $250. Prom Donations Border Bank, $250. National Bank of Commerce, $100. True Star Federal Credit Union, $250. Lisa Hay, $250. Wright Interior, $250. Borderland Jewelry, $250. PCA, $1,000. Has Bargain Customs, a 40-inch TV mug and sweatshirt, McDonald's four t-shirts, Serendipity Salon, a basket of hair supplies, Borderland Jewelry, a necklace. Whereupon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is declared adopted. And we will move on to 1B. Approve to retain the five-day school week for the 25, 26 school year and continue the exploration, evaluation, and collection of feedback regarding the potential implementation of a four-day school week. Do I have a motion? Motion by Tina. Second by Bruce. Any discussion?
Can I just say one thing? I heard in your proposal that one of the issues or one of the areas of concern is absenteeism for both students and staff on the Fridays. And I think as part of exploring the four-day school option and doing the research, we need to look into, what is the systemic problem with absenteeism? Because to me, going to a four-day school week is putting a Band-Aid on a flesh wound that's gushing. Because who's to say that Thursday wouldn't be the new Friday? And we, we need to establish as a board and as a school district what our stance is on absenteeism and what's acceptable and what's not accepted. Because I know in the elementary school, there's a lot of kids leaving early for sports, you know, on Fridays, games at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. We need to say as a school district that that's not acceptable anymore. Those games should start after school or on Saturday. So I think we need to establish something going forward about what is an acceptable excused absence? Because I don't know that, I don't know what's an excused absence and what's an unexcused absence. I mean, is every time a parent calls in, is that excused? You know what I mean? We need to set a standard as what we're gonna put up with going forward. I mean, I know I had this conversation with my mother and she said, "If you were in a sport where they expected you to be out of school every Friday, you wouldn't be in the sport." Because school comes first and we need to establish that. And I don't think teachers should refrain from teaching their lessons on a Friday just because they don't have a full classroom. That's the kid's responsibility to catch up and get caught up. It's not the teacher's responsibility or everybody else that's there doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's not their fault and they shouldn't be there for daycare that day just because everybody else is gone. So I just feel really strongly about that. If we're gonna explore this going forward, we need to look at the problem and not just put a Band-Aid on it.
Well, I believe that there are many, many factors that we've, I've heard a lot through email. We have to look at a lot of things. And thank goodness, we've got a whole year now to kind of flesh out those things and see what we can do about all of them. That's one good point, but there's many others.
Oh, there is. Agreed.
And I, and I think part of, you know, that is the Policies and Procedures group that we have, subcommittee to work on some of those procedures through the handbook, through the athletic, you know, all of those things and look at, you know, the MSBA, you know, what their recommendations are and all of those. So I think when we get, you know, through that, some of that stuff will come into play as well.
Well, and I love that we're being more focused on data, okay? So what does the data show for what these kids are missing every Friday? Do we need to go to, you know, rec hockey and say, geez, can we work with you on scheduling these tournaments and things so that kids don't have to miss school? Like, those are the kind of conversations we need to be having.
And I think that's one thing that Beth has been addressing too. With her big, for sure, big push on attendance, yeah, definitely. Yep.
Can I just thank the community also for any of you that reached out to us?
Yes.
Regarding the four-day, five-day process and all that. It was quite impressive, the research that the majority of you did, the concern that you have for those kids. It's much appreciated, believe me. So, thank you.
Yes, and I think a big factor in just continuing to do research was from, you know, the, the feedback that we received from, you know, everyone. And I, and I totally get it. I understand both, both sides. And I'm kind of one of those people that's like, I'm in the middle. You know, it's hard and I need more data. So again, yeah, thank you for, to everybody for letting us know how you feel and the issues that you feel.
Well, and know going forward that we will be as transparent. I mean, what Beth said, we're gonna be as transparent as possible. It kind of hurt my heart a little bit when people thought that the decision was a foregone conclusion that had already been made with no input. We were not, we're not gonna do that, okay? I, I'll tell you from my perspective, we're not gonna do that. Okay, so don't just assume that a decision has been made. Ask the questions. Give the feedback. We want it.
Right, and not just on social media, like preach out to us so we can hear.
Yes, that would be appreciated. All right, any other discussion? Being done, we have a motion by Tina and a second by Bruce to retain the five-day school week for next year and continue exploring and the potential of a four-day week. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1C, approve the Falls Elementary sections for the 25, 26 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rocks.
I'll second.
Second by Dale. Any discussion? All right. Motion by Rocks and second by Dale to approve the Falls Elementary sections for the 25, 26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the move of sixth grade to Falls Elementary School beginning in the 25, 26 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion by Bruce and second by Tina. Any discussion?
I just wanna say I'm really glad that we're looking at the data for this. I felt we did the flip-flop for way too long and I do not want this to be one of those situations. So I'm, I'm hopeful that this is going to stick and be a good thing.
Yeah.
Agreed. All right, I have a motion by Bruce and a second by Tina to approve the move of sixth grade to Falls Elementary School beginning 25, 26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve to establish an early education model at West End for ISD 361 preschool programming, early childhood special education, childcare, and community education for the 25, 26 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Rocks and second by Tina. Any discussion?
And again, let's just apologize to the staff that has to move their classroom again. I feel terrible that I've been through this.
Well, although Beth has enlisted the sports teams to help.
Right, and I love that. I do, I love it.
Yeah, it's still work. We recognize it still works for the teachers.
It definitely is.
And they will have four walls.
All right, I have a motion by Rocks and a second by Tina to approve, to establish an early education model at the West End for ISD 361 preschool, early childhood, special education, childcare, and community education for the 25, 26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the Falls High School course schedules and programming for the 25, 26 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
A second.
Motion by Dale and second by Jess. Any discussion? All right, I have a motion by Dale and a second by Jessica to approve the Falls High School course schedules and programming for the 25, 26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the recommendation of hiring a .6 community ed, .4 childcare director for the 25, 26 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Bruce, second by Rocks. Any discussion? All right, I have a motion by Bruce and a second by Rocks to approve the recommendation of hiring a .6 community ed, .4 childcare director for the 25, 26 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve the three-year school photo contract to Sage Lee Photography. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion by Jessica and second by Rocks. Any discussion?
About time.
But it was, it was put out that there was just one bid, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Do we know why? Like, I just, in all the years I've been on the board, I'm just curious why there wasn't any other bids.
I don't know the answer to that. It was placed in all the places needed to be, but yes.
I just wanted to make sure with, you know, everything new, I waited with something. Perfect.
I have a motion by Jessica and a second by Rocks to approve the three-year school photo contract to Sage Lee Photography. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and I think we're finally to adjournment. I'm going to be that person, I'm sorry. I just need to say one thing. And I know, I apologize. I see Mr. Doherty is sitting here, and I just want to recognize that the proposal he brought forth at our last board meeting, we can move forward in constructing as long as it is aligned with what we're doing currently with the Stonemobile Club. And we just need to get the proposal ready, and then we will bring that to the district attorney. So I just didn't want you to come here tonight and think we were ignoring you because I should have recognized that in my report. So my apologies. So we will have a meeting and talk about next steps on that.
Okay, can I go?
Yeah. And then last thing I want to say is, I want to recognize board members, thank you. You've worked tirelessly behind the scenes in helping support the vision that Principal West and Principal Tate and I and our school team members have proposed to you. And I just, you have been on calls, emails, meetings, and you worked tirelessly behind the scenes too. And I just want to say thank you for the support that you've given us as a school district. And I just want to real quick thank all the parents and people in the audience. You are welcome to come to all of our meetings. So we'll see you next time.
I'm Ben, care of board members. If we could possibly draft a letter that we could submit to the club that in fact we are going to work on that, and that would be very helpful with our grant application. And then we can work out all the details down the road.
Okay.
And thank you so much, and a very interesting meeting. Guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jess and a second by Tina to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.